Nice work. Thank you, Assistant. All right, it is seven P M. Today is March twentieth. The welcome to the Village of Fredonia Trustees Board Meeting. First item on the agenda, as I call this meeting to order, will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. If our lovely clerk could call the roll.
Trustee Eifert? Trustee Frank? Trustee Abeglin? President Gerke?
Here.
Trustee George? Trustee Bart?
Here.
Trustee Miley?
President.
You.
All right. Here we have a quorum. We will move on. Next section is going to be for public comments. Please note that these public comments are limited to anything that is not on the agenda and limited to five minutes per person that wants to make a comment. If you do want to say something, please come up to the microphone and state your name. You're distracting me back there. That's okay. Yeah, I know. I suppose. But there could be somebody online.
You could make a public comment.
And who, Chief? Yeah, if you wanted to.
But I would like to make a comment if nobody else is.
Wow, all right, go ahead.
Uh, this is probably going to be my last meeting. It's been an honor serve on the board. And I learned a lot. Uh, I wish I could stay longer, but I have family obligations. But I wish everybody success and health in life. And maybe I'll see you around.
Excellent. Well, we have certainly enjoyed having you here, Kurt, so thank you for serving. And look forward to seeing you around the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Are there any other public comments from anybody? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda consisting of approving the minutes, March sixth, twenty twenty-five Village Board Meeting, and approving the general bond, water, and sewer invoices. What?
There's a change in the bills from what was provided in the package.
Ah, okay.
Um, so it's actually a decrease in the bill?
Right, a slight decrease. Eric's guys had bought some ladders from Drew's Hardware in Port, and they found different ones that they liked better at Home Depot, so instead of having a credit sitting with overpaying Drew's, I applied the credit, which is highlighted on your form, so it just reduces the payment down.
Oh, excellent. And there are no additional bills, correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that. So looking for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda, but it was correction to the bills.
A second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions? If not, I'll call all the, I'll call the question. I'm sorry. All those in favor? I opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have report on village committees. We have trustee Barts with the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting.
This will be probably my last report for you guys. This is exciting as well. We have a couple of meetings, and I can't remember. You know, this when we had our open forum, but there was some good discussion on the open space and park planning. Uh, it continued last night with our committee. There was a handful of citizens there along with our event planning committee to discuss our plan to complete the book for the next year. Our focus is really going to be on a handful of parks, really try and do what we can to enhance a handful of parks and really make them great, one being Murray Cross with the splash zone coming in. The other be Parkland Park. Are going to be a couple of our main proponents. So we had a really good discussion around that and learned a little bit more about some of our other parks and being that this book has not been updated since, what did we say, twenty seventeen?
Twenty seventeen.
There's been some interesting findings in there, and we're board and committee who wanted to see our parks back then. Interesting shout out. Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but in twenty seventeen, there was the even discussions then about a splash pad slash water feature, something in the village. So very exciting to kind of see that come full circle at this point. Um, thank you, President Gerke, for helping push that one along over the years. Um, that's been good.
Didn't even know the public wanted it.
That many years ago. So that was really good. We're making good heavily, um, uh, the open space parks for the open space and parks planning book. Um, looking forward to be able to pass that off to the new board and new committee. We also continued with our event planning, had some really good discussions last night. We're really starting to get down to the nitty gritty of things. Again, very exciting. We've got Rebel Grace being our headliner for that evening. We're working on food and all the events for the day. Start getting our D P W involved here soon because he loves it. And start getting everything rolling here. So I'm pretty excited. Um, we're going to start meeting more often on the committee side. So stay tuned. If anybody wants to join the committee, feel free to let me or hopefully future President Lenz know. I'll get set up.
Excellent. Thank you, trustee Barts. Are there any questions?
Left that the owner of those properties is now renting it out to another larger manufacturer. So in a sense, Guyanese Neil, the entity is gone. Diamond wipes is taking over part of their business operations. And then the larger manufacturing space is going to stay vacant really until until that property owner finds another leasing to use that space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we don't have any part in, in those two buildings? The owner takes care of that, or do we actively try to get another business?
Yeah, we absolutely will. We, so we've already connected. Um, so our same, our same commercial realtor that we use for our developments, we connected them with their agent that they're using for leasing, because it's still a win-win, right? If we can get somebody in there and hack our guy earns a little bit of commission by doing it, then that's great, right? It's going to bring in another business into the community. So, yep, tho- those relationships are happening, so we can encourage.
Any prospects for those?
Um, not really, not yet, just because it's such a unique building, right? It's specifically made for that large scale manufacturing and business that uses a lot of space, right? A lot of storage space. So think of like, you know, Amazon distributor who has a lot of, who needs a lot of space to store things. That's the kind of business that would need to fit there. Um, so they know that. Um, and again, Dozaki County knows that, the big five know that. So all of the networks that we normally work with for bringing in businesses are aware that that's now available. And, you know, fingers crossed, we get somebody in there sooner than later.
Yeah, so we haven't forgotten about that.
Yeah, no, we, we remember. Yep, absolutely.
Right. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for administrator at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Village Marshals Report. Which is in the packet. Any questions on that? So already had my chance to look at it prior to the meeting, I hope. Nothing crazy, just kind of some updates on numbers. All right, hearing no questions on that, we'll move on to the fire chief.
You have our report being there as well. One notable thing where we picked up another junior program member from the high school. So, Stowe, Fernandez, Ed Jones, and Dave are taking programs. So it's a good thing. It's not helping us on the fire. I said it things right now, but for the future, but that's basically it. And those calls, I had it last year again, so that used to be a big thing. So we go two, three days without a call, so it's time for five or six, so that's, that's it.
Right. Any questions for the fire chief?
It's more of a, I guess, a question, maybe, and, and something to add. Um, I don't know if you heard that the, uh, there was a state legislature, uh, late, or I should say Assemblyman proposing a program, uh, passing a program for paramedics that, because I guess there's a shortage of paramedics. And he wanted to incentivize, uh, paramedics, uh, and, and pay for their, uh, schooling. Were you aware of that? Yeah, so I, I don't know how that fits in our pro, I guess, maybe, uh, they'll give us better prospects, right? Yeah. Yeah, so.
Everybody, right now, everybody in the county is looking for them. Um, and nobody is full, so to say. Um, we, we have some prospects that are younger that are still going through school and won't be done until August, September timeframe, before they finish their paramedic program. Um, and that's three of them right now. Um, that I know that are going through school, that are each in the house in Belgium, that are open and capable that should land some of them at least as part of jobs.
How long is their schooling?
Two years, certified paramedic program in your program.
Okay. Yeah, I guess maybe that's just a future thing that we could, you know, recruit some future paramedics for that.
Yeah, I think any help that we can get recruiting and, you know, training and all that stuff is huge.
And it's one more thing. We just need one more full-time, right? And then one part-time.
Next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our fire chief? Okay, we will move on to Public Works on the wastewater treatment plant operator. Mister Eric Paulus.
Uh, of course, here. Like to keep it small, so the television. And the only thing I'd like to note, I know it's a month away, and you're going to bring it up, is, uh, our base next month, um, twenty-fourth, Thursday. So I've been here, I'm not sure about Roger all did, but, uh, we've been rotating, uh, three schools and each school that participates in indoor class, which they've all said, yes, uh, we planted a tree that there so fast, it was up at elementary school, right?
Yeah.
And then a year before, it's here at the old office. This year, it's at St. John's. Uh, this year also marks the thirtieth year that Village has been participating in Arbor Day. So the Arby Show here presenting, I think it's a play. I don't know what she all says, plays and stuff. She'll give a speech, so it's kind of good, but do you think that the village has kept up with Tree City Arbor Day for thirty years?
Hey.
The ten, I don't know, maybe it's a half hour.
Yeah, I don't know, about a half hour, something like that, with questions, maybe a little longer, but not far away anymore.
Are you going to plant up at St. John's School?
I figured if those kids are, their plans, they at least they can see the tree they planted.
Eric, will you give a speech?
I will not.
Oh.
That will be the new upcoming president, will be given that speech.
You're ready? Take the former president.
Nah, no, he's busy that day.
Continue your time.
I'm working that day. Maybe I'll have time. I don't know. Oh, no love. I like it. Well, thank you. Are there any other questions for our D P W director?
Yes, um, Stony Creek Park, I know there was some concerns with some of the trees down that were on the fence line and all of that, and that was kind of during our winter months and whatnot. With the weird weather we've had, have you guys been able to get out there and get any of this taken care of?
I mean, it's just so fine up there. It's soft. Uh, I did talk to the owner out there, and he says he doesn't care what I do. He doesn't care about pushing back on his property. So we have permission to go in there and start clearing. Uh, I told him I'll do the best I can and prepare that fence. So, so he doesn't prefer it in the start.
Is that funds on his property?
If you look at one half, it is. If you look at the next half, it's not. So I guess whichever one you present, so it's his.
Sorry.
No, you're, you're on a roll.
At the intersection of Fox Glen and Martin, as you're heading out of town, that house that is on the northwest corner. They have a lot of tree lines, and we had talked about clearing some of that out. I know with some of the high winds, there's been some trees down over that way. Is there anything the village can do to help clean some of that up a little bit?
I did talk to him on that too, in the fall, and I asked if I could come in here and clean it up, and he said, all yours. On the list.
Great.
Where the mosquitoes started coming.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess, I guess I could. One more thing to add is we did pick up another municipality for labs.
Care to share which one that might be?
Uh, this is Milton Cooper.
Are you at capacity now for that?
Uh, no, I'm screwed.
Do your guys think that you can squeeze them more again?
I'm sure because of my test to go to college.
Yeah.
She's been a great help and I don't know, she's also on the smart there. She's super smart. I mean, she
Yeah.
She's great, so she helps mine a lot in labs.
Oh, she's been blessing for sure. Yeah, go ahead. I'm just, I'm just waiting for you to take mine, so go ahead.
Yeah.
How we done?
She wants to go to
Go to lacrosse, isn't she?
Yeah, she's going lacrosse, and it's for genetics science or something.
Oh, jeez.
Must be smart.
Um, equipment. So I know you got your new truck. And I know we have some equipment that we got on order. Is any of that coming in anytime soon?
Uh, the jetter came in. Uh, it's on vacation last week. Uh, I gave them a list. They went out. And it sounds dumb, but they loved it. It works. So they got actually quite a bit of jetted already. Uh, we just had the devil on our trash pump today, so we put that status on the plow truck is, it's still in a nice cozy shop up at Plymouth. Uh, the fuel tank arrived, just quite safe, so we did that right.
How's the current status of your snow removal vehicles as of today?
So the downfall is we only have two plow trucks that can solve. So the one down, like, thank goodness it didn't get real cold. Because it takes like eight hours to get your village to solve. Uh, as Jason was coming back, uh, the weight fell off the loader, so we got down to repair this one.
Was there a problem with the salt truck that was out? This morning? I mean, when I drove by, it was great, but maybe he fixed it.
Load those one, instead of Jason, throw it back, I get the fire up there. The wind came down. So I think it was ours about, so then he rolled it way down and then lifted her back in and we're back together.
You good?
Think I've done though.
I'll think about it first.
Nope.
Okay, I got one done. Then, then we're done. Uh, at, right by Stony Creek Park, I was noticing at least last week, and I'm guessing it's because of the frost, but I don't know. There's kind of that dip that's in the road there with those culvert, or what are you thinking is going on with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems really bad this year, though.
Yeah, when the frost gets down there and moves that culvert up and down, it's cold. I mean, that was also to our last break, we got a mark blocking the, the, uh, there's actually literally a rock underneath the main that the frost moved and snapped it.
Hmm.
So yeah, I mean, I think it's pretty much back to normal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there's so much with that hurt there from sediment coming down from the hill. I mean, it's
Yeah, it's
It's going to be a project to
I just kind of wonder if that at some point will have to be addressed and looked at, you know what I mean? Like you said, with the sediment coming down the hill and everything, it just, it seems like it's all overgrown, and even in the park, it's really one of those things that can you dredge it out? You know, can you do something to take a backhoe in there and dig it deeper type deal? I know the D N R, I'm sure, would be super happy about that, but
Well, I found, I have been hard looking for funding to help with that dredging.
Yeah.
And I just had to bring it back in.
Okay.
But I know we've been getting into houses trying to locate all the services there.
Yeah.
But, you know, when they're approaching, it's going to be in doubt, because also the municipal lot, you look at one map, it shows the homeowner to the door. Oh, it's part of, part of that.
Right, yeah.
So
Do we know where Fillmore Street lands on C I P for replacement?
I would say if you could land a creator a little bit of time, they'll tell you.
Don't ask questions. I want to follow-ups.
It's fine. I get it.
Yeah, you said you were done.
I know, that's what I said.
Should stop talking.
What are you going to do with all this? It's probably not why.
That's probably true.
All right, so as of right now, it's not in the next five years.
Encourage the future board to take a look at that.
There's other roads.
All right, are there any other questions for Mister Paulus? Going once, going twice. All right, thank you very much, sir. We'll move on to the clerk.
Um, okay.
Oh, I'll go so fast. Um, there's any questions. Um, there's an election coming up. Um, the ballots came in in the nick of time. Um, we did the pre-lab test. It was great. We went to Forest Haven. It was great. Um, staffing is going well. Um, alcohol licensing, um, is already starting. I've been working with Agent Dorn. Um, we've scheduled our annual tavern inspections and refined our provisional operator licensing process to more closely align with state statutes faster. Um, act, okay.
I was kidding.
Um, so I did a bunch of training over the last two weeks. Um, there was a training on Act two thirty-five regarding judicial privacy. Um, it's very burdensome for the judicial officers. Um, but there is the expectation that that, um, that expectation of privacy, uh, will expand to more public safety officers. So that will like fundamentally change the way we handle public records requests. So I'm paying attention to that. Um, all right, um, web training on confidential voters and election reconciliation and a webinar on, uh, Laredo Anywhere Software, which is like, um, it allows access to the register of these documents, um, which is, you know, really useful for when we're looking for easements or lot lines. Um, so that's great. Um, Marshall Leed has lifted winter parking restrictions. Residents were happy about that. Um, dog licensing, chicken permits, policies and procedure handbook, um, continues, and a new newsletter layout.
I love that you still talk about chicken permits. Sorry?
Your question.
And people like ducks in the village.
Chicken?
No.
Be cheaper, eh, chickens?
I just like that she still brings it up.
The chickens? Oh, I mean, they trickle in like one a week, and I, I love that people are paying attention now, and, and we're getting more and more people. Um, you know, more closely following ordinance. It's just appropriate.
It's very interesting. There's a, I believe right now that there is some sort of bill going around the state that's supposed to be very broadly saying every municipality in the state should be able to have chickens. So that'll be interesting to see how that goes through. I'm just, I'm I know, I hear you. All right. I like chickens. Anything else for the clerk? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we'll move on to the treasurer's report.
Okay, so I've been basically doing, you know, the normal daily, weekly routine of things. Um, the audit seemed to go fairly well. I've gotten quite a handful of adjusting journal entries from the auditors. I'll be posting those up tomorrow morning in the system for the twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four dates. Um. There still have a few more that they'll be providing. I'm not quite sure when. Um, last I talked to Jordan last week and she was thinking that sometime the later portion of April. They would be in to do kind of like the follow-up. I did request to. Um, you know, sit with them to, you know, explain through more of the journal entries as to what they're specifically looking for. I know some of it she said was, you know, a lot of cleanup from. Um, prior transactions that maybe weren't done right and, you know, fixing up stuff. Um, but you know, I just wanted a lot of clarification so that I understand what they're doing or what they're looking for. So that going forward. Um, I can be a lot more prepared and, you know. And it's just a lot of things that I'm used to in my career that, you know, I was responsible for making sure a lot of those type of entries were done. You know, now that the auditors are providing that stuff. So, um, you know, so that's a lot of things that, you know, I'll be looking forward to working on going forward and cleaning up certain other balance sheet stuff. Um, I did request for them to provide me a lot of, you know, whatever schedules they had that supporting like the balance sheet kind of stuff. Um, so we'll see what they provide me with that. Cause like when we got this last bill that was in your packet, I was astounded by how much money it was costing. So. To me, that's my goal is to drastically try to reduce that bill down as much as possible. Just because I, like I said, I was floored by the amount of what you're paying for, you know, me being in the private sector and knowing what we pay in the private sector. So. That is my, you know, number one goal is to try to make sure that that is drastically reduced as much as possible. Aside from that, um, I finished my, the majority of my voter training. So I got my email late this afternoon for WISVOT to get into there. Um, so I helped Michelle out as she was enjoying a field trip with her son that, uh, you know. Did a lot of the in-person voting today. So, and I also did the, the same, um. Was it Act two thirty-five that? Training that was on that I listened in on that too. So, you know, just looking forward to, you know, digging in some more and, you know, getting. Even more, you know, in line with everything and, you know, looking to help Chris with, you know, more of the budget stuff. Um, today I loaded in all the new sewer rates. So that's ready to go. Um, I worked with Eric. Thirty-first, we're gonna do all the meter reads. So, you know, first few days of April, all the new bills should go out. I did, um, get a couple of the powerpoints from. Um, Lisa from elders and, you know, reviewed through that. So I have a good understanding of like how the rates and stuff were developed and all that. So I, you know. Um, I had an hour long conversation with this morning, you know, to make sure, you know, whatever questions I had and just, you know, going through a lot of that stuff. So. Um, that was a good hour spent, you know, talking with Lisa on that. So going forward, I think a lot of that should be a lot clearer as to what they're doing and, you know, following on that. So. So, yeah, looking forward to a lot more, you know, in-depth. Work on future stuff.
Awesome. Thank you. Seems like you're learning a lot and a lot of stuff is coming together and it's.
It's cool. Yep. I'll just add quick. She was so confident about bringing down our cost of audit auditing that she already told me to, to lessen that line item for next year's budget. So she's gonna be held to it now.
That's fantastic. Good work. Awesome. Are there any other questions of our treasurer? Sure you don't have anything over there, trust of hearts?
Thanks for checking by.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you had the opportunity. No problem. All right. Very good. Well, thank you very much. We'll move on then to the Midbury Municipal Association Designated Representative. We have to get that to be a shorter. I guess.
That's the list so far. Yeah, you could update your little bit.
Is the, uh, a salary list of, um. The elected, elected officials? You.
Yeah, trustees and, uh. Um, I, um, at the last legislative committee meeting, their topic was. Trades and festival safety. Um, with all of the things that we're trying to guard against, uh, and nothing's popping up. The, uh, officer for Officer Gerkey from Jackson Police Department. And Sergeant Weisenberger for, from the Seabird Police Department. The Grafton explained. Basically their, their biggest, uh, festival that they have. Is, uh, the strawberry fest. And that usually garners about fifty thousand or so attendees over a couple of days. They're, uh, hardening their granddaughter years. They're, they're hardening their, they start out with barricades and, and things of this nature. And they're up to DPW trucks and, and, uh, things on the sidewalk and wherever. They have their fire department. Is involved as, as ours is generally. Most of the time our fire department is involved in the festivals and not just the, uh, attending. The festivals are required to pay the police wages so that doesn't fall on the taxpayer. And, uh. He had mentioned that they had one case of open hearing. Some people were really. Excited because, uh, people are walking around with gun straps or excited or whatever. And he mentioned that, well, it's, it's legal. This constitution doesn't allow carry that. Um, they're coming if you keep them down or whatever. Uh, they generally, uh, keep an eye on the person to make sure he's not, uh, or she is not flaunting it. Or is that suspiciously that they're sober, et cetera, et cetera. So it covers all the, uh, requirements for not being bothered with open carriage. They have, um, they, they, uh, have one of their dogs, either one of their dogs or they did one trend. It's called Nitro and he's a bomb sniffing dog. Along with, um. I think he's licensed or. Recharged too, but he's a bomb sniffing dog. And that's one, uh, thing that. We haven't been considered thinking about our festivals. What happens if somebody sets a bomb on some place or hurts your car and then this? So, um, he says that's something that we have to start being aware of and, and guarding that's. Um, there is, uh. A federal training, um. In, uh, New Mexico, Teck, it's called. And they will train. And they also do train dogs for bomb sniffers and stuff like that. They will train the dark that you have. And I believe, well, I put on it, he said it's, he thinks it's free if they. Um, they also have drones that they use to cover the festival area. Being that it's not a parade and it's not moving and not sin and whatnot. Uh, it's a festival that covers a, a general area. They use drones. They have a licensed drone operator, a couple of them I guess. And, uh. They also go, we're according to the CRG maps. Which are maps that are done by land information accounting. And another facility, if you know what that is. But, uh, it gives you information about buildings or dimensions, where the doors are. And it pictures your, your lap, what kind of year old you. Um, and, uh, where they're situated and, and alleys and things of that nature. So if you're not familiar. People that are from the county, law enforcement that's from the county are known that is. Yeah, are familiar with the area, but people that come in from other units, other, uh. Jurisdiction aren't always that familiar with the area and so this is something that they can put on their phone. Uh, now they have, uh, or just a picture of, well, what's that over there? And a picture that gets seen behind, uh, that is a very, very, so that's, uh. Yeah. The said, they emphasize that you have to wait more every year. Cause every year something else will come up. And you have to, uh, back that away in your memory when it comes to your time to sit down and, and plan the following year. Then you can notice things up and you adjust your plan and enhance your, 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 so. It's just like the criminals, you have to stay one step ahead of them cause their eyes see them. And, uh, law enforcement has to be thinking ahead of that. So. It was, it was very interesting. There's a lot that I, I discovered, I can tell you, and there was a lot that came out. There was no PowerPoint. It was all vermin and whatnot. But, uh. These meetings that are held in Jackson by Henry and their legislative committee meetings. Generally are very informative. They have some good speakers to provide good and useful information. And I would urge. Um, anyone on the next board to consider. Uh, stopping in for one or two and seeing if that's something that they want to carry on than, uh. The village is representative now. Um, but that's shit. It'd be a lot of work for me to do. Being all four times I am and stuff. So.
Not all.
You know.
Anyhow, I would, I would urge that that's something that, uh. That we should consider. And maybe when a very interesting topic comes up. Or a specific topic that focuses on something that we might do or have done or whatever. You have more than one person can go to. It's an automated. You have like everyone on the county or subject night time going, everybody will soak up a different bunch of facts. And you'll have a lot more when you get back home. Uh, to think about remembers and that's just what version is. Um, that's about, uh, any questions on that?
Yeah, Don, uh, regarding that, was it? Solely, uh, focused on strawberry fist or was it a, a large events in general?
That's the one that he wanted to dwell on because that's the one that's most involved or whatever. It's not, it's more than a, a, a parade that goes from this way, four blocks and, and whatnot. Those. The, um. The officers and, uh, different units, governmental units are fairly used to, uh, handling those. And wanted to remind that, but, uh, uh, a big festival or a big band or a beach outing or a music in the parks, things of that nature. You know, signing going market card for an expulsion by one of those practices.
You, you know.
And there's, yeah, it's based in all sorts of those. So.
With the enormity of that event, I mean, I mean, it's, it's huge now. Did they mention that, uh, any federal law enforcement, uh, involved in errors? Ozaki County out of their proof.
Yeah.
I mean, it's close to Milwaukee. I mean, you, you never know. I, I was there, uh, last year and I was just. I was just astounded at the amount of people and very diverse crowds.
Fifty thousand people.
Yeah.
That's a lot of people to run through.
I thought there was more than that, but, but it was, but they didn't mention anything about federal law enforcement being involved.
There is some presence. There's sometimes, uh, they'll bring a dark, but they'll bring a cool. Technical capability. And, and work with that and things and, and.
So some feds are. Involved in or is it?
It's something that we should get, we should, this law works and whatever trials and things of that nature. It's, uh, I imagine a big, uh, summer fest or something like that. They've got to have just more than a hundred bucks.
I, I know there's, yeah. Oh, yeah. They have to have people there.
Yeah, for sure. All right.
Thank you.
Any questions for Donnie? All right. Thank you very much for doing that. We do appreciate it. Uh, next we have the Ozaki County District Two Supervisor's report. Um, guessing that we don't have anything. I would challenge the next board. Um, we have had, I believe it's one report from our Ozaki County District Two Supervisor. Obviously he is not. Um, obligated to do that, but it's very helpful that know what's going on at the county. So, um. If anybody's got a good relationship with Bruce, I would highly, and you know, recommend that somebody reach out to him. And have him at least once a quarter or something like that, provide us something, um, because it is very useful and very helpful to have that. So. All right. If there are no questions or whatever on that, we will move on to items for discussion and or action. The first one we have is a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash O three pertaining to the number of election inspectors at the April first, twenty twenty-five spring election. Um, again, this is a resolution stating that we are going to be having five per shift, I believe.
Um, yes, but it does give me the flexibility to go up to seven if I feel needed and I can, uh. Roll that many people in.
Perfect. That's all I have to say on that.
So.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash O three. Allowing for five election inspectors at the April first. Twenty twenty-five spring election.
I have a motion. I have a second. Are there any questions on that?
I just like, yeah, I think it's a pretty important election. So I think it. As many, um, inspectors as we can get, I think it's important.
Very good. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next we have a motion to approve road maintenance and repair agreement and snow plowing agreement between the village of Fredonia and the town of Fredonia. If you do look at the package and you look through it, it looks like this hasn't been updated in around fifteen years. Uh, now it's being updated and put into writing. Obviously it's always good to have an agreement between the two. It'll help out, it looks like for, uh, snow plowing in both town and the village, not as much backing up into traffic. Uh, delays and disturbances in the traffic and things like that. So if there are any questions of our DPW staff administrator, any of those, we could certainly. You know, I welcome anybody to ask questions, but that is the meat and potatoes of that, I believe. Perfect.
Did, uh, you guys sit down with the town? And, uh, box is not all of that?
The common communities.
Yeah, this basically equalizes what we go through and puts it in a place that makes it handy for both of us.
Just real quick, the only other future change that you'll see is we're gonna need to enter into a settlement agreement with the town of Sockville. So when you guys annexed that land down to the south here, we also intersected with the town of Sockville. And so there's a small portion of road that previously was managed by the town. Now it's kind of managed by us, but it's kind of managed by the town of Sockville. So we'll need to figure out what that, what that looks like. It's not an immediate concern, but we'll have a similar agreement like this.
I'll make a motion to approve road maintenance and repair agreement and snow plowing agreement between the village of Fredonia and the town of Fredonia.
Second. I have a motion. I have a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next you have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O two pertaining to the maintenance of services for sewer laterals. Um, if you recall, we talked about this last time we had the ordinance, um. Given to us that we previewed that we could take a look at. Uh, and this. Has to do mostly who owns what, where does the ownership end? And also allows us to kind of incorporate this into those, um, those small. If you want to call them, I'm blanking. Thank you. Lift stations that we will be putting in the industrial park. Did I hit that one? Okay, yeah. Excellent. I don't believe there are any changes anybody requested on that. So this is our second time seeing this.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O two.
All right. I have a motion. I have a second. Any other questions, concerns? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. For the next portion of this meeting, uh, we're going to be talking about, if y'all remember the Tower Point, um. Things going on with the water tower and some of those other discussions that we had, uh, and conversations that I had with our village clerk. You know, this is, this is something that we have in front of us to take a look at. We, that somebody can explain to us different things. We can go through it. But if there is any negotiation of any sort that we are going to start entering into, um, then it would be appropriate for us to go into closed session and talk about that negotiation before. Am I hitting that?
Yeah.
Correctly, before actually, uh, making a recommendation or approving or anything like that. So for this portion of it, um. For this portion of it, um I would like to uh. Listen to the information, have this presented for us, what's been made, but if we decide that we do want to negotiate anything further, then we will take it a step further and go into closed session. Makes sense? Anything you want to add?
So I just included those motions on the agenda in case you guys decide to negotiate further. Um so you know, we don't, we don't need to take action on these things, um you know, if you choose not to.
Correct. All right. So then we have a discussion and possible action on the TPA. Was that seven?
It is seven.
Excellent. LLC Tower Point Water Tower and Selco Wireless Agreements. Uh and for this, I will bring in both our attorney and our village administrator to kind of refresh us, walk us through, uh let us know where we are.
Sounds great.
Take it away.
So I'll give the refresh and then I'll leave it to Mike for the tough stuff. So what we last talked. Uh in closed session, we came out of that saying, saying, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward or whatever this looks like. We agreed on an amount. And we proceeded to really look at the easement agreement. This body came up with great bullet, bullet points and things that you wanted to add to an agreement. Um so that was given to our attorney as we led it to negotiations, which I'll let him cover in a little bit. Um the only difference really between what happened uh last we talked to now. Is if you remember, we have two primary cellular carriers that are on our towers. We have uh Verizon and we have T-Mobile. Um Verizon in their current lease agreement has an option, uh a first right of refusal option. That if we were to enter into an easement agreement like we are, they have the ability to say, well, wait, wait, we want to buy it instead. The main reason for that is because right now as our tenant, technically we could say, ah, we don't want you anymore. We're gonna kick you off or we're gonna replace Verizon with something else. By Verizon owning that lease easement, then they have the control of their little area of the tower and they have more security in that. Um so we sent out that letter saying, hey, we might be doing this. You have thirty days to act. Verizon did say, yep, we want to be part of those negotiations now. So as Mike will elaborate on that complicated things a little bit. Because now we're not really dealing with one easement agreement with one company. We're dealing with two. And so the, the thought between the two of us is that let's get the meat and potatoes of what we want this easement agreement to look like that protects the village. And if we could all be amenable to that, then we pretty much can copy the same agreement and kick it over to Verizon as well. Um the difference in change, so if you guys uh know, and I could say this in open session, we talked about a million dollars was going to be our amount. Or the, the water tower with the split, T-Mobile's is worth three hundred, Verizon's is worth seven hundred. So the language that you're looking at within the easement would be Tower Point purchasing the T-Mobile piece, which is the three hundred. And then if we further uh discuss with Verizon, that's for that seven hundred piece. So I think that's a very simplified version of what we've done so far. And then I'll let attorney here talk about the meat and potatoes of the agreement.
Excellent summary. Uh. So as, as your administrator indicated. Slightly complex, instead of one agreement, it's two. So we ultimately. Uh I think we're not asking you to take any action tonight because we want to get. The Verizon agreement pinned down and in front of you. And then I think the thought is hopefully next month. Uh the board can approve. Both agreements at once. And. Uh if, if that's your, if that's your wishes. And then, and then uh then the, the agreements would be done. So by way of uh, by way of the terms, as your administrator talked about. Um. We had concerns uh about the uh structure of the tower and the structural integrity of the tower. So what we've done is we've built in terms. Um allowing for, providing for Tower Point will provide a fifty thousand dollar, an additional fifty thousand dollar payment to the village. To help offset maintenance of the tower over the ninety nine year term. In addition, Tower Point, if there's a uh. Tower Point will provide up to fifteen thousand dollars. For one uh, one tenant relocation event during the term. And uh by your tower maintenance agreement, we know that the tower is going to have to be painted in the next. Twenty five years. So there will be at least one. Probably reload where the, where the tenants will have to relocate off the tower. For temporarily and then relocate back on. Tower Point has agreed to pay up to fifteen thousand dollars to offset, offset those costs. In addition, any.
I don't recall starting to move tenants off the tower. To paint.
So you do sometimes. So I talked to Tyler Argal. If you remember, he was a gentleman who we'd entered in contract with for the water USG company. Um so he said, it really depends on what kind of painting they're doing. So they can go all the way up to the top, right, and paint that whole area. But even then, that's like a two day thing, right? They would temporarily move, the company would hire a boom truck. To be their antenna for the two days. They paint that area and then they get moved back on there. So you're right, it's got a few and far between, but i- in ninety nine years, it's bound to happen at some point.
Yeah, I wonder if the. The television in the last ninety nine years.
Yeah. Yeah, that. Of course, that.
I don't, I haven't been able to find out any information on how long a water tower can last.
We keep.
This, this, this agreement, the agreement also provides that. Do it the village decide to decommission the tower and bring it down? You're granting Tower Point the ability itself at, at no cost to the village to build its own tower. There and continue to use the tower for, continue to have tower access for. Uh for cell tenants. Now, I don't know, you know, if. That would all. These are all things we, we aren't sure of. If the tower comes down, you're gonna. The village obviously needs the water tower. So unless there's another location or something, but at least, but we have the right. To decommission the tower, should that ever be determined. In a, in addition, any new tenants on the tower. Um. Tower Point will make sure that new tenants have a structural analysis done. To make sure that the tower can, is able to support. The, the new tenants' antenna and, and things like that to make sure there's no, no issues there. Um.
And that report would be provided to this body. I'd be like that language.
Right, exactly. Um, any new tenants, Tower Point will negotiate to, to uh. Make sure that. If there, when the new tenants need access to the tower, the village is given notice. And, and the village is given the right, but not, not necessarily of the obligation to attend. The access so that, so that you have control of what's going on on your tower. Um. And. There is, there is uh indemnification, mutual indemnification. In the agreement, but uh as to the village's indemnification, it's tempered, it's, it's limited by the uh. The statutory limits, uh which are currently fifty thousand dollars. So, so that all the statutory limits are in there for any. Environmental indemnification or any other indemnification. So we've made sure of that. Um. And finally, your uh, your administrator did a nice job of uh negotiating for a, a five thousand dollar uh attorney fee, legal fee offset. For, for the time I've been spending on this. So Tower Point will pay up to five thousand dollars. For a legal fee offset. Uh for the time we've been negotiating this. So um. You know, as, as you're uh, I think uh, you know, Chris, how if, I think I've hit the high, the high points. Um essentially what you're doing is you're granting Tower Point. The right to take over the T-Mobile lease. Plus, plus have the right for other, other antenna, plus up to five hundred square feet on the ground. For any ground. Related uh. Infrastructure. Generators, things like that. But Verizon has asked for um to take over its lease and also for the additional five hundred square feet and that's. And so. I think. Where your administrator and I are is if, if there's consensus, we're not going to necessarily vote to approve the agreement tonight, but if there's consensus that. That we're heading in a, in a forward, a positive motion here, then we will approach Verizon, get a similar agreement as, as Chris has indicated, get a similar agreement with them. Bring both agreements to you. Uh for consideration and, and possible approval.
I have a question about that indemnification. There's um. The statutes say, well, we're, we're in years and, and missing that up to such and such, or they, they can't pay more than such and such regulatory.
Right.
Now. Is this set up in such a way? Where? Um. We're basically like paying the deductible if it's going to be a. Um a hundred thousand dollar bill or something to fix something. We pay the first, what is it, fifty thousand?
You, your, your indemnification would be limited by whatever the statutory limit is. Not only, you know, statutes could change. We're, we're looking out ninety, a long time here, but. At least you'd have the stat, as you say, uh, Don, the statutory immunities and, and the uh limits on liability.
Yeah, is that? Um is that written here in such a way that the insurance company or the? The grantee? Well, basically when you're a bridge company. Um can say, well, I don't care what you got, then your contract, the loss of such and such and you can't do that. You know? Sometimes you can't, you can't extinguish a law, even if you want to, just by writing out a, you know, divorce decree or a good example. You put something in a, in a, in an agreement to make the side. Both sides happy and, and satisfied. And we get to using that language. They, they tell you, well, that's against the statute.
Oh, uh well, of course, here, here, here we've adopted the statutes, uh we've adopted the statutory references right in the agreement. So I think our, our insurance company would rely on the agreement. To limit the liability. They would.
Ours would.
Ours would.
Ours would.
For sure.
What would stop their insurance company from suing our account?
Well, they very well might.
Can't do this just in a contract.
Uh, well, I, I think we do have the ability to, to adopt the limits. You know, they've acknowledged, we've adopted the limits right in the agreement. So.
Okay.
I, I, I think it's uh. I think it would be enforceable and our insurance company will make sure to enforce it.
Okay. There is, there is, um at least one other thing that I wish. Um. I don't know if I'm thinking about this. Correctly. When I've read uh most of the contracts. And thought to the not to vote in uh. Ironclad at the end. Um. They have, we're gonna have three kinds of renters on this tour. Now, talk comes on this tour. We're gonna have. Lieutenant. Renters, you're gonna have the replacement telecom tenants listed. And we're gonna have the uh. The no telecommunication tenants. The renter tenants. Now. The renter tenants, as soon as they start paying rent. You're gonna split that, they'll keep you up and we're gonna.
That, that's right. And I, I forgot.
See any language in this entire thing. Yeah. Says that they're going to give us half of the money. And just like me on the rent from our current tenants.
No, uh you're, you're correct. They're, they're taking over. The buyout isn't, is, is essentially a. A takeover of the current T-Mobile lease. And so they're, 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 that, that buyout, that three hundred thousand dollars is a buyout of the, of the. Cur, the future rent flow. And if it's uh, if it's been, you know, if you, if you add up the future rent flow for the next ninety nine years, it might add up to more than three hundred thousand dollars. But essentially what they're saying is they're giving us the present value of money. They're giving us the money right now. We can.
Is that part of the million that they're talking?
That's part of the million. And Verizon will buy out its lease. So, so the two current tenants.
That's seven hundred thousand.
That's right. And so that's the two current tenants. So it's only new tenants where the, there'll be a fifty fifty. Uh share. Split.
So we're gonna. We're at the explosion, say the speak. We're, we're gonna be getting a check for a million dollars. And we won't be getting any rent from anybody.
Correct.
We don't have any current. Ratchet tenants.
That's correct.
Probably not for a long time.
Right. I don't know.
That's just my supervision. Right, just you know, everybody knows that we're. We're doing, they know we're making, we're taking in over five thousand a month or something like that. For one year.
Oh, it's.
Seven thousand. Bye.
Um.
I have a good job of chips.
It is. Yeah, so it's about twenty six thousand in. When you add them both together. And Bertram Wireless, which we're not.
Annually, that would, that would be annually.
Twenty, twenty six thousand an annual we're getting from our tenants now?
Yes.
So we can count on that way away and not getting any replacements yet. Until we can get someone. Yeah. To get. Here, and it has to be a telecom company. It can't be some other installation of some other variety. Until we, until they get to playing a telecom company. To locate in their. Um. In their, or in their lease premises.
Yeah, but they would, I mean, I'm sure Tower Point would argue that, well, if we gave you the million dollars and you put it in your LGIP account, if I look at like last month's statement. We earn about five thousand a month for a million dollars sitting in an account. That's sixty thousand a year. So that's, that's what their argument would be to us is that, yeah, you're gonna lose out on the. Twenty seven that you're getting annually, but as long as that money sits there, which maybe will, maybe it won't. We earn maybe sixty thousand a year based off current interest rates. So. It's kind of a horse apiece, but I, I know what you're saying. We're losing out of that guaranteed income. Yeah.
And it, it also mentions that if uh. If someone vacates our premises up there, which is very, very surprising. And another architect comes in. They're uh. It's all fair that they're uh. They don't have to uh. Pay the fifty percent rent because they put it in. A part of the premise. That wasn't sharing rent in practice.
Sure. Right.
So.
As you say, it's new tenants.
Yeah. It would have to be a tenant. It would have to be a tenant that uh outside of the two that would keep them in ours. It would have to be a communication tenant. That is situated in their premises, which is outside of our premises on the, on the word. Or it's over. I just want to make sure I understand the trade. It's written in language meant to receive.
It's, it's complicated. Um, there, there isn't much. You know, switching gears, there isn't much for us to report on the, on the Verizon. Uh, you know, we don't, we don't have a draft agreement with Verizon yet. Except to say that they've expressed the interest in uh. In exercising the same right. And as we say, we're, we're going to seek similar terms with Verizon. I'd be interested.
I did the math on that though. If, at twenty six thousand dollars. And, and assuming that's a constant uh figure, that would be two million dollars, uh two million five hundred seventy four thousand. No, in the other, in, 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 uh, on the opposing, I would say, well, that's assuming that. Uh cellphone technology continues. You know, ninety nine years. So I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess. You know, a million dollars might be worth it, but I don't know. How can we predict the future? I guess it's just. That we have those figures and we can compare things.
And that's the gamble, I think, that Tower Point makes, right? And that's what they're in the business of doing, so.
Let's say according to failures, they're in the business to move money. When they feel like it.
Yeah.
Um.
So unless. Uh, as, as, as uh your clerk and administrator indicated, unless there's terms that you think. You're, you'd wanna negotiate or, or talk about negotiation strategy in a closed session. You don't, you don't necessarily have to vote to go into a closed session. Um, but if there are, you know, we, we certainly can, but otherwise I guess. We, we're just, we're not looking for a vote so much as we're looking, we're just looking for consensus from the, from the board that. Uh you want, you want to your administrator and I to continue sort of down this path.
Yeah, we're just asking and answering questions here.
Correct. And I, and I feel like, again, I mean, we've got one part of it, right? We've got the AT&T or whatever it is, or T-Mobile. Right, correct. Many. Okay. We've got that part of it going on, right? Now we need to know. Okay, well, is Verizon actually interested in doing the same agreement? So I for one would love to hear what they have to say. And hopefully, you know, you guys can report back at the next meeting and then we can kind of take everything.
See what happens with it before, obviously, we make a vote, but. I know this is, you know, we, we provided you guys with a lot of stipulations and said, hey, we need to, we need to protect ourselves. We need to protect our taxpayers. We need to make sure that we have control over this tower. Um, and. As far as I'm concerned, uh, you've done, you've done your homework and you've been, been really great and thrown some extra things in there. So. I would, I would love to see what it looks like going forward.
And, and speaking of that, just so the, the board knows, in our, in our uh conversations with Verizon, we've made it very clear that you, you. You will agree to the same terms that we have been negotiating with, with Tower Point, mainly because we don't want to do this work all over again, right? We, we, we have done our, our due diligence. We feel like this is a really firm easement. I'm glad that the board, uh, you know, majority of you guys agree. Um, so we're serious that, you know, they either can take this or leave it. And if they don't want to, that's okay. And we'll continue our conversations with, with Tower Point, so.
Well, they have to do the first terms. Otherwise, they'll just say, well, sorry, we're gonna refuse the first offer. We're going to the next one.
Yep, correct. Sounds good.
And I, I want to say thank you because I feel like. When we started this process, it was, oh, we don't really know. Let's ask some other municipalities and some other municipalities said, yeah, we just kind of went with it. And I feel like this board has kind of. Done its homework and really gone above and beyond. And I feel like, I feel comfortable where we are now, much more so than I did. On the first time. Oh, there's this guy.
Uh, maybe I missed it or I just couldn't hear. I just want to make sure since we signed into a maintenance agreement, but of other company that any work that. Tower Point or Verizon AT&T do does not interfere or change. Or wreck my agreement with the maintenance meetings. If I'm looking at taking the tower down, they're saying, no, we're on, I think that we want to move the power around for an antenna. I hope that there be coordination or something, or if they do something to their antenna, power will not, that it's reported back. So. My maintenance company has. An idea of what's going on.
Yep, and I'll say that they already do. So, and so, and I think I shared that earlier. So I've shared, talked to Tyler Argal with USG. He's aware of these arrangements and he just asked the same thing, that if anything major happens, right? They want to be kept up to date so that way that their maintenance can work around and work with, you know, these tenants that we have on the tower. You got it.
Well, I actually asked that question. When you were given this uh, whether or not you would have problems working with these and he's not. No problem. Of course, he's trying to sell his coffee too, so.
Correct. Wrong, yep.
So is it the general kind of consensus of the board that's?
It's a, it's funny, you have to look under your.
Oh, yeah.
Had to talk about Verizon buying down. Their lease for seven hundred thousand, that's only for anything. For it, this is Tower Point to buy out T-Mobile lease for three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
I guess why would we be considering a buy of three hundred thousand, you know, if several.
Yeah, so the values are based on the actual, the lease agreements and the monthly income that they bring in. So we just, so the rents are just much higher for Verizon than it is for T-Mobile. So that's why theirs is worth more than.
I mean, I.
A billion dollars.
I mean, I know some companies, they pull in anywhere, forty, fifty thousand a month, probably, so. So like, it's not unusual for a fifty, a, all.
Yeah.
And I don't know the location of our area. I don't know if it's got good enough ambition to hold that different.
Are you saying like uh, other buyout companies? Are you saying like, like?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have existing leases.
Right.
It will be difficult until those leases term out. It'd be difficult to, to adjust those rents.
But one of the benefits, I'd say, working with Tower Point is that they have the network to, to bring in those newer, um. Yeah, tenants. And we benefit from it because we get fifty percent of the future revenues that come in as well. So I would assume one of the parts of their business is that they have that larger network and a win for them is a win for us. And it's a, you know, win win for both sides.
Yeah, we'd be getting both checks, I mean, with three hundred from Tower Point and then seven hundred from Verizon. So we would be giving them.
Yeah, it's not bad. It's not bad. That's, I mean, if you do the math on what we're getting right now a month, if we could finish their rate spreads, but what we're getting a month right now, that's. Like thirty-eight, four years, I don't have that right? So that's, I mean, that's less than half of what they want to buy out.
Yeah.
We brought that conversation up.
Yes. Yep.
Ask for the stars.
We did?
Based on their original. Was there a original?
It was a little more than that.
Some.
Yeah.
It was, it was a loan, I ended up going back for a lot more. Yeah.
If, if there's, uh, if I could, if I could interrupt, if there's consensus to move forward. Um, then that's certainly what we will do. And that's, I think, what I'm hearing. Um, and so you have a couple of, uh, your clerk would put a couple of action items on the agenda, but you could just uh postpone or table those. Uh, pending your administrator and I coming back to you with, with the final agreements for both Tower Point and Verizon. Does that make sense?
I've seen head nods. Yes, okay.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. As always.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, uh, so as our attorney said, um, if it's okay with the rest of the board, um, really. Items D, E, F, G, and H will be non-action items and, um. We'll go from there. That works. I don't think there's any formal thing we have to do other than that, so. All right, uh, we will move on then and we will go to correspondence. Do we have correspondence?
No.
No, we do not. All right. Are there any items for, for the future consideration by us? Go ahead. I'm sure you got something. No?
I guess.
All right, anybody else, anything for the good of the order? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're out here at eight seventeen PM. Thank you, everybody. We will see you in April.